Good morning. I will call the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Norfolk Planning Commission meeting to order, inform the public of the Open Meetings Act posted in the northwest corner of the building, and ask for roll.
Wait.
Here.
Sock.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Hupkey.
Here.
Hofer.
Here.
Kubi.
Here.
Griffith.
Here.
Keach.
Here.
Ronfeld.
Ask for approval of the full agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion is second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And consideration of approval of the minutes from September third, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion is second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing at the request of Lucas and Amber Pinkelman to consider a zone change from agricultural to rural residential on property located east of the southeast corner of twenty-four oh two East Norfolk Avenue. Anyone here to speak on behalf? Good morning.
Good morning. Well, we're in Schroeder. What we have is we have a tract of land out there that we're just, if you take a look at the plat, we're just taking this where the house is. And we're adding this part, this part of this tract, this tract over here. It was over here. And we had to do it because we have two different zonings. So the purpose of the zoning change is so that we have every, each separate lot has just only one zoning. Any other questions? Try to answer them if I can.
So currently, where the house is at, what's that zone?
It's zoned RR.
That's what I thought. I'm feeling a bit mixed up.
So they're just accumulating more land underneath that RR?
Yeah, so this cutout corner here, there's a plat right after the zoning that you'll see that Laverne was talking about, that they're adding this corner cutout. I don't know why it was cut out a few years ago, but they want that added on now. Yeah.
So cleaning, cleaning it up, making it a little more square.
Right. And so we're cleaning up the zoning so you don't have one lot with two separate zonings on it. So that's why we're doing the zoning change before the plat.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak on behalf? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open it up for discussion. Let me see, the plat will be coming next to square off that corner. Just want to add more to that plot of land there, so.
Hearing no further discussion, I will move to consider the recommendation of a zoning change from agricultural to rural residential on property located east of the southeast corner of twenty-four zero two East Norfolk Avenue.
Motion is second. Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
In consideration of recommendation of the final plat, Miller Pinkelman's addition. The promised plat from the zone change. Any discussion? I take a motion.
I'll make a motion for to recommend the final plat of Miller Pinkelman's addition.
Second. Motion is second. Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
This time, I'll open up the public hearing at the request of Mary Ann Hozie to consider a zoning change from I-two heavy industrial district to R-one, one and two family residential on property addresses eighteen oh one South First Street. Anyone here to speak on behalf? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rocky Smith. I live at nineteen oh nine South First, which is the one acre of land that we're proposing be changed to residential from industrial. I have my brother-in-law Jeff Hozie here. We're here on behalf of Mary Ann Hozie. She's the widow of Ray Hozie who passed away last year. The residence that we're talking about in the one acre plot has always been a Hozie family home. My wife's grandmother lived in that home back at the beginning of the last century and passed it on to her son who passed away last year. It was Ray Hozie's intent that my wife Candy bewilled the house and the land that it sits on. I've gone to my representatives in this area, talked to attorneys. I've gotten Mr. Schroeder involved to come out and survey one acre of land. Both Jeff and myself are in agreement that the land be separated so my wife can inherit that and we continue to live in that house. My wife has lived in that residence for over twenty years. Between the two of us, it's really become our home. Living there, you know, being a part of it, and my wife being able to own this property. She would like nothing more and would be here this morning except she's at work. So anyway, I'm here to formally ask that this one acre of land, the home that we live in, the home that we love, be changed over to residential so that we can, so we can live there appropriately. I thank you for your consideration and time.
Thanks, Rocky. This is a public hearing. Is there any other folks that would like to speak on behalf of this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Val, is there any other things associated with this that maybe?
So, yes, I've spoken with Mr. Smith on this previously, and that's why we're doing the zone change, to make it conforming, because currently, it's, everything's on one lot with the salvage yard, as he says, and the plat will be coming after the zone change, similar to the first one that we heard today. But this one is a little different in that when buffer yards come into play, normally it's the more intense zoning has to deal with the buffer yards. Because they are changing from a more intense to a less intense, they get the buffer yard. That only comes into play if they, something happens to the house, they want to add on, they want to build something new. Then you're going to have those buffer yards between an industrial and a residential that they need to deal with. But it's an acre, so I wouldn't think that they would have an issue fitting something on there, like a garage or that sort of thing.
There's plenty of space to be able to do that. And Rocky, you are aware of that specific notion?
Yes, I am. We also already have the garage on the property as well as two smaller outbuildings, a couple sheds.
So what's there is fine, you know, so what's there is there, just kind of like any other non-conforming use. The house will be conforming then, so it can be rebuilt at that point in time. They'll just have to respect the buffer yards depending on where those come into play. And that will be filed at the county after this, just so that if it ever does get sold or handed down to somebody else, the next person knows when they do the title search that those buffer yards are there. Unless for some reason, the salvage yard goes away in years' time and it becomes something other than industrial, then, then they wouldn't take place. But it's just kind of a heads up for the next person if, if we maintain the industrial next to residential.
Thank you, Val.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
At this point, it's an ongoing thing that we're thinking this is going to be passed down to family and continue to be subsequent to the future.
Sure. And my main thing is I just wanted to make sure that when, you know, if it were to be passed on to someone else, that they understand that they're going to be responsible for those setbacks and those buffer yards, if and, if and when you were to, you know, add on, ask for a building permit or something like that, just to, you know, what is it, a hundred feet?
Yes, it's rather large because the salvage yard is I-two, which is our heaviest industry.
And that's where, you know, I wanted to make sure that you knew that, you know, you're going to be responsible, the property owner's going to be responsible for those buffer yards. And not that it's, I don't want it to be a surprise, you know, if, if and when you pass it on, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend a zoning change from I-two to R-one on property addressed as eighteen oh one South First Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And consideration of the recommendation of the final plat of Ray Hozie's subdivision. So the final plat for what we just discussed.
Hearing no discussion, I'll move to consider the recommendation of the final plat of Ray Hozie's subdivision.
Second. Motion is second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing at the request of Bar MM LLC to consider a zone change from agricultural to I-one light industrial on property located generally a quarter mile south of the intersection of South Thirteenth Street and West South Airport Road.
Morning.
Morning.
This is thirty-six point five, five acres, just, and we have thirty-five acres of I-one just to the north there, so it's just kind of continuing down. And we have C-one on the east side of the highway.
So you're just capturing that?
Yeah, it's agriculture now, just wanting to zone it the same as what is to the north there for future development.
Any indication of what you'd be developing there?
Not at this time. No plans in set in place. It's just part of, just kind of getting it organized at this point.
And do you own everything south of there?
I do, yep.
And do you own the, everything else, north and east, also?
North, east, nor, no.
Excuse me, of, of the, the one you're going from ag to?
Yes, I, I own the one where-
Everything that else is, that's industrial right there?
Yeah, the I-one to the north, yes. Yes, sir. Yep. And then there's, there's three tracks there, and the, the south track is still agriculture.
Okay. But you don't, you don't own anything east of there?
No.
Okay. And is there anything operating on that I-one track?
No.
Now?
It's still pasture.
Okay.
Chris Machalot.
And you did sign in?
Oh, I will.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think we're good. Thank you. This is still a public hearing? If there's anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this? Morning.
Good morning.
If I can have you sign in, please.
Yep. My name's Steve Abler. I'm here, the property east of five hundred fifty-fifth Avenue, Norfolk Airport. And we do not oppose the I-one, the zoning. However, I would like to bring to the attention the soccer fields in the recreational area that has been developed the last twenty years for the Norfolk Soccer Club. I understand Chris owns the property south of where he's requesting, yes. And the soccer field is actually to the east there. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. We do get thousands some people there during the tournaments. There's a lot of traffic down five hundred fifty-fifth Avenue. And without a plat, without knowing the access and stuff to and from the highway, I guess that would be a concern for future. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on behalf of this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open for discussion.
Val, does this comply with comp plan?
I would say generally, just because our comp plan does recommend industrial and commercial along the highways. With the annexation, it doesn't actually go this far, but if you look at our comp plan, it does have industrial and commercial going down the, the major highways. So I would say, yes, it generally complies. It is in the highway corridor overlay. So you will, if whoever builds on it will need to do something.
They'll need to comply with the aesthetics regulation.
Correct, yes.
You aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other concerns?
Not that I'm aware of. I had a few neighbors call and ask what was going to go on there, and I could not answer that. And why I couldn't answer, because they're not quite sure what's going on, so. And if it does change to I-one, whatever our land use matrix and zoning says is permitted on I-one is what is allowed to go there or a conditional use permit. So there's quite a bit that has a potential of going there.
There's no other discussion, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend a zoning change from agricultural to I-one light industrial district on property located a half mile south of the intersection of South Thirteenth Street and West Airport Road.
I'll second it. We have a motion is second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing at the request of Jose Maria Cular to consider a zoning change from R-two to C-one on property addressed as eight fifteen South First Street. Anyone here to speak on behalf? Okay, Val.
Well, I would say between myself and Brianna, maybe we can put this together, because we've had a few conversations with the owner who's come in. This was the Mexican grocery store there, kind of in front of the armory, the water park down on South First Street. I'll just zoom out a little bit so you can kind of see where we're at here, there on the corner. I guess the grocery store is not operating anymore. It is zoned R-two. So that is a grandfathered use, as long as it doesn't stop for more than twelve months. But it does not appear that the new owners want to continue that grocery store operation, and so that is why they are asking for a commercial zoning. I don't know that they've decided what they want to do with it yet. We've gone anywhere from a daycare to a tavern potentially, or an event center. We, when we were talking to them, we did let them know that they kind of need to be a little careful because there's not a lot of parking. There's probably about a half dozen in the, the side there, off the side street, and then maybe another three or four in the back. So they will need to, to be somewhat considerate of what their new use is, if it fits in C-one, that there is some parking going on there. I wish they were here today to see if they had made a decision on which direction they want to go on this. If you do want to hear from them, I mean, you can certainly table it and we can bring it back if that's what you choose to do, or you can make a recommendation for it to move forward to Planning Commission, and we can certainly contact them to, to come back if, if that's your choosing.
So within, within the confines of C-one, I'm a little hesitant at the open-endedness. But, you know, I think it's an okay use of where we're at as far as C-one goes. I guess I'm just hesitant. I don't know if I like the idea of a tavern on the, you know, on the corner of the armory and the water park and Memorial Field there. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily think that's a great idea. However, is a tavern within the confines of C-one?
It's permitted in C-one, yes.
So, you know, we wouldn't have any authority to, to govern that anyways if we were to change it, but C-one would be appropriate in that area, technically?
Yeah, I mean, you're on a, a major road there. You're on an arterial road. So, I mean-
You got five lanes of traffic and-
Right. So generally speaking, commercial is going to be on more of an arterial type, larger road.
And I think, it's just not a very large building to begin with. And are the, the owners of it now, are they aware of, you know, if something were to happen to that, don't setbacks and all that come into play?
We did inform them of that when they came in a time or two. They seemed to understand that. But it would be similar to the other one, that if this does change, something will be filed at the, the county to say that the buffer yards now come into play. And at that point, if something, God forbid, does some, happen to the building, those buffer yards kick in. It's really an unbuildable lot. Really, nothing's going back on there because you're going to have, I think, a fifteen-foot buffer yard from the north and the east. And by the time you put setbacks and parking, I mean, it's really unbuildable at that point in time.
And they're aware there's really no room for expansion or adding additional parking?
They said there was a lot of parking around there, and was like, no, you, I'm sorry, you can't use other people's parking for yourself, so-
You can't use the armory parking lot for your business?
Right, yeah. So we did explain that to them, yes.
So without this zone change, they could only continue operating the business as the grocery store since that's grandfathered in, or do something that conforms to the R-two district?
Correct, yes. And if they really wanted to go down the daycare route, that does actually fit in R-two. You can have a daycare home up to twelve, and yeah, most likely you could get potentially a cup to do a daycare center in R-two also. But commercial-wise, not a lot fits in R-two, obviously, yeah.
Certainly wouldn't be opposed to daycare. We clearly need that in this community. I guess, so we're still on a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and now open it for discussion.
I'm not really crazy about having C-one like right in the middle of all residential and recreation area and that.
Maybe we should table it until we find out what their intent is.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily keen on moving forward without them here. I'm just-
I think without them here and not knowing the traffic and parking implications and, you know, we have no information right now. So I think tabling is probably our best option.
I agree.
I don't want to, I don't want to move forward in such a general, open-endedness direction, so. Have you heard from them at all in the last week or two, Val?
I haven't. Have you?
No, not in the last week. They brought everything in. Yeah, like I said, they've kind of thrown around a couple ideas, nothing solid yet, so I, I don't know what, what the plan is, so.
Some people get confused between AM and PM. They don't notice the AM, so hopefully they don't show up at seven-thirty tonight. Some people get confused between AM and PM. They don't notice the AM, so hopefully they don't show up at seven thirty tonight.
Yeah, I get a little concerned here on that particular parcel. I can see a future there where the sidewalk on either side of that street's going to be required. Once that sidewalk goes in, if we call that in, that parking, that streetside parking's gone. Just, right there on that, on that south line of there, as you can see, it just comes in off the corner, off the southwest corner there a little bit, but then it terminates. And just as, as, as we grow, as things change, I could certainly see that sidewalk being called in at some point.
Not a very nice piece of land down there. Is the whole strip along First Street here on the east side, is that all R two?
Yes. Let me bring up the zoning map again. So this is pretty much from the alleyway west, that's all R two and then east is all R one. So all of the park stuff is in R one.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, without them being here, without having a general direction. Val, what are the restrictions on tabling? Do we need to table to a date certain or can we just table it for the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting?
I'd say you could table it to the next planning commission meeting and then we'll make contact with them to assure that they can be there. If for some reason they cannot be there, the next regular one, we can pull it off the table and re-table it to a date certain or something like that into a time that we can make sure that they're able to be here. That way it doesn't die on the table.
And is, is the next one the thirtieth or is that be the?
No, it's a, it's a three-week
Okay.
gap, so it would be?
October seventh.
October sixth, or seventh, sorry, yes.
Okay. Hearing that discussion, I think the table is the correct. Correct move.
I'll move to table.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to table this. Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you. Val?
Okay.
August twenty twenty-five building permit report.
So the August building permit, single family detached, we got one new permit in, so we are falling a little behind. We have thirty-nine this year. We had forty-seven last year at this time. We had one new duplex, so we have three units, six total this year. We had one, two units total last year. No new multifamily came in, so we're still holding at a hundred and sixty-six units for this year, whereas we were thirty last year. Two new single family attached, those seem to be the popular ones this year because we have twenty-two units this year and six for last year. And building valuation, we're still about thirty-three point seven million higher than last year.
Fair enough. Thank you, Val. Any other open topics or concerns? Seeing none, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you all.